Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away in our community this week. Especially, our hearts go out to the people of England for the tragedy that they suffered.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Rogan.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here. Dismissed at reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A Tax Assessor's Report for Hearing Date to be held June 6, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3B Petition for a Streetlight in the 400 Block of 21st Street.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3C Agenda for the City Planning Commission Meeting Held May 24, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed.
3D Tax Assessor's Results Report For Hearing Date Held May 17, 2017.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one announcement. The Scranton Police Department is going to hold their annual breakfast buffet fundraiser. It's going to be Friday, June 2. Seating times are going to be from 6:30 in the morning until noon. Location's at Trolley's at Hilton Scranton, which is 100 Adams Avenue in Scranton. The cost is $10 per person and it's a good time for a good cause and I hope for a big turnout. Thank you.
City Hall will be closed this Monday, May 29, in observation of Memorial Day. DPW will also be off on Monday. Therefore, Refuge and Recycling will be one day behind next week. Colts will also be closed as well with no bus service on Monday, May 29. Bus service will resume on a regular schedule on Tuesday, May 30. This evening, for the first time, we will announce that the, and we'll keep doing this so everyone is aware of it. Electronic recycling program details have been announced for a two-week period beginning June 12 through June 26. The items will need to be placed curbside for the DPW to collect. Each household will be allowed one television and one computer monitor. At this time, the special collection should not interfere with your regular recycling during this two-week period. You should be aware that pickup of any of these items may occur at any time, not necessarily on your scheduled garbage day. Please be prepared to have your items ready and placed curbside for June the 12th. As we receive any additional information, we will follow up with those details. One other announcement this evening before public comment, this is usually asked. In regards to the city's property list for insurance coverage, the business administrator received the input from department heads last week. He expects to meet with Knowles within the next two weeks to review the information and have them prepare a revised list following that meeting. So, we should have that within the next, if you add one week plus two, probably within the next three weeks.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Joan Hodowanis, city resident and taxpayer. Reminder, tomorrow night, 5 to 8 p.m., swinging on Vine, 500 Vine Street in front of the Scranton Public Library. There will be alcohol served, so you must be 21 or older to attend. And next week, I'll talk about the upcoming book sale to raise money for the library. I'm pleased to see we're making some kind of progress on the insurance list. But with that in mind, I'm extremely appreciative that Marie mentioned this report last week. Apparently, every May, the city sends to the Honorable Judges in the Court of Common Pleas, to the city council, and to the mayor, this annual financial report. So Marie had pointed out that it's not been issued for calendar year 2015 yet, and she inquired why, and I did too. And I talked to several people, starting with Roseanne Novembrino. And Roseanne told me that there are discrepancies, not further defined, between her numbers and the numbers given by SB and Company on their audit in 2015. Their audit was published on December 5, 2016. So I have a couple questions. I don't think the report would be delayed if the difference in numbers was inconsequential. I would like to know what those discrepancies are. I would also like to know why we are hearing about this five months after we received the audit from SB and Company. And there's something else very interesting in this document. I've been running around to the law department and to the BA's office and to the city controller's office, trying to find out who can correct some of the obvious problems with this document. They have an organizational chart. And this is the 2013 report, but it's the same for 2014. Under boards and commissions, you have, among other things, the Scranton Public Library, which is no longer owned by the city and hasn't been since 2010. You have the Golf Course Commission. When did that leave us? You have the Zoological Society, which I don't think we've had since we've had a zoo. And you have the Scranton Municipal Golf Course. But apparently, nobody thinks that these are substantive problems and won't worry about them. But in Appendix 5, which is real estate and buildings owned by the city of Scranton, which may be related to the Knowles Insurance List. At the very bottom, it says, "The properties in this department were furnished by the City of Scranton Law Department." And on this page, page 43, the first three buildings are the Albright Memorial Library, the Silkman House Library, and the Greenridge Library. So I went into the law department and I said, "Ladies, who updates this document?" And I got the infamous Hogan's Heroes, "I know nothing. Go talk to the BA's office." I went and talked and spoke to Nancy Craig. And basically, her response to me was, "Well, if Roseanne Novembrino signed off on the document, it's her fault." Now, all I want to do is see this material published correctly. This is not hard to do. Makes us look like idiots. And maybe we are idiots for doing it this way. Okay. The third-party administrator, RFP. I was here when they opened the bids on May 19. There was one bid. It came in on May 15. It was access medical evaluations from Michigan. Now, we want a nationally-recognized entity, correct? I'd never heard of them, so I Googled them. This entity was formed in the year 2005. They have a staff of three people, and their annual revenue, not profit, but revenue, is Is this the nationally-recognized entity that's going to ensure we handle disability pensions correctly? So this has gone up to the law department to see if they pass muster. They may not, because they were looking at some issues about signing certificates and other things. And with regard to yesterday's sewer authority meeting, Michael Parker made a statement that he did not feel it was necessary to bring the AG in, Mr. De Pasquale, for a special audit, because he says, "Well, we're hiring our own independent auditor." I hope to God that's not Rossi and Rossi, who audited the city, going back at least to 2002, and who somehow did not pick up on the double pensions. I want the Auditor General. And if during motions, you would explain what's going on with the proposed town hall meeting and with the redacted invoices, I'm sure the public would love to know. Thank you.
Lee Morgan.
Lee Morgan. I'd just like to start off by saying that, and not in a personal way, okay? Nothing personal against any council member. But I think the voters are really on to something with the way the vote took place the other day. I mean, I do understand, Mr. Wexler, that you will not be retained, and I think that was a start. But for the life of me, I just, and like I said, it's not personal. I don't know how Mr. Rogan survived it. And it's my hope, and I do mean this, that every councilman that voted for that sewer deal gets voted out and never holds public office again, because I think it's time for people to realize one thing. We elect people to represent us, and they don't do that. And our country, if you take a look at what the President of the United States is talking about now, about cutbacks, anybody who pays attention to what's happening to our country now, we've elected politicians for 50 years that kept borrowing money, kept doing crazy things. It's come to the point where a very large percentage of your income disappears on the day you get paid. Now, Mr. Evans, you're talking about nuisance taxes the other day. Well, you know, people can't afford their property tax, okay? They can't afford the garbage fees. They can't afford a lot of these things. And it's this council and previous councils' fault. And the sale of all our assets goes back to this council and previous councils and mayors that we've elected. And it's not a personal thing, but when an asset belongs to a community, it's placed in trust to the elected officials to protect it. It's not a personal thing. The authorities, they were never designed to create an asset and sell it off for pennies. The reason that no private business ever came into the city and put sewer lines in the city and created the plant is, they didn't have the money necessary to do it. Would it never happened? Okay? The reason it happened is because the taxpayers made it happen by the sacrifices they made for a very long, extended period of time. And when you talk today about the assets that are gone, some people think it's comical, whether it's the library or the golf course or anything else. These were all assets that belonged to the people of this community. The University of Scranton is over at the Southside Sports Complex, which was illegally sold by the city of Scranton and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, because federal law says the Project 70 projects cannot be sold. So now, should the federal government come in here and tell the city it wants its money back? And who will they come to for that money? And you know, with the sewer authority gone, who's going to fund these pensions? Is the LST taxing to fund that? Does anybody have any idea? See, this is very serious business in a city. And anybody who voted for that should not be retained. And anybody who puts somebody's yard sign up that had so much disrespect for the people in this community, they're out of their mind. They really need to seek counseling of some type, okay, to realize, to find the root of why they would put somebody's yard sign in their yard that just stole their assets and also furthered the mismanagement of their city. Take a look at all the children in the Scranton School District that are getting a free or reduced lunch and grasp the poverty that's here. Not the make-believe world that the politicians live in when they're funding a renaissance of residential development in the downtown, because the downtowns were never really designed for residential development. They were designed to be business hubs, to create money and jobs. But that's not what's going on here. And look at the boondoggle of the Scranton Lace Building. They came in with torches, spent a couple weeks, cut everything out of it, and it's sitting there. They're waiting for more money, just like the North Scranton Project. That was all funded by the citizens. It's just ridiculous what's taken place. And the average person, they don't have a chance, because they've got you representing them. And, you know, you've got to ask another question here today. Where were the state representative and the state senator for 25 years as the city of Scranton did the silliest things you'd ever seen? Not just the treehouse or the bridge down in the gorge or the street signs that are sun-faded now that you can't see. All the corrupt, silly things that have been done in this city that moved money around, okay, but didn't help the general public, didn't create a better life for them. And the board yesterday, it shows you where they are, because I asked them if they'd go to the PUC and request a reduction in Pennsylvania American Water's rates so that we could recapture the stormwater collection revenue that this council and the Scranton Sewer Authority gave away. So be proud of yourself, gentlemen, because you did a terrible job.
Bill Jackowitz, South Scranton resident. Good evening, Kathy. Good evening, stenographer Laurie Amel. Good evening to all of you. First of all, I'm not in a very good mood, because I just paid my American Water bill. So, thanks, people. I appreciate that. That sewer authority meeting yesterday, I didn't go to it. I was going to go to it. At the last minute, I had another appointment, and I had to decide which one to go to, and I decided to go to the other one, because I already knew the outcome of the sewer authority meeting before I would even go to it. I knew that there'd be a motion passed to pass having them come in and do the audit, but I knew it would be voted down. I knew if citizens were allowed to talk, that no one was going to be listening to them anyway. They were just going to be up there talking. And from talking to the people who were at the sewer authority meeting, that's basically what happened. And also, that's what I got out of reading the paper today. So, again, you know, I don't know if you guys realize it or not, but the city of Scranton has serious problems. Serious problems. Difficult problems. Problems that are hard to solve. And by selling off all the assets and everything that we own is not the solution. And it's too late to do anything about it now, because that's all in the past. It's over and done with. There's nothing we can do to change that. How much revenue do we get from the parking garages? When I say "we," I mean the residents. How much revenue do we receive from the parking garages?
Right now, we receive none.
So we get none for the parking meters and we get none for the parking garages?
Not until certain thresholds are met.
Not to win?
Certain thresholds are met. Later on, towards the end of the lease agreement, there may be profits that come into the city.
And do you have any idea how long that might be?
Forty years.
How many?
Forty years.
Four years? So for four years, we have no revenue coming in whatsoever. How are we going to fund pension payments? If we have no revenue coming in from nobody, do we have any revenue coming in from the marketplace?
Taxes.
Besides taxes?
What else would there be?
I'm asking you.
No, they pay taxes. I don't understand. I don't know what, they pay mercantile tax, they pay property tax. I don't know what other revenue they should generate for us.
So we're going to get taxes. Is that starting this year or is that further on down the road?
They've been paying taxes all along.
Well, yeah, I know. But since they took over new ownership, you know, I wasn't sure if there was some agreements made. You know, things around here are made without the knowledge of the people. So that's why I'm asking, so I can get it straight in my own mind. So we got no revenue coming in from the garages and parking meters, and we have no revenue coming in from the sewer authority anymore.
We have no debt from the park. We have no, we're relieved of the receivership from the parking garages.
Yeah, but at one time, we were getting revenue, correct?
At one time, we had major bills to pay also.
Right, exactly. And again, who's responsible for those major bills?
The authority that was.
And who appointed the authority? The mayor did, right? So it boils right back down to our elected officials are responsible for it. When you look at the overall picture of the whole thing, everything boils down to the elected officials being responsible for it. Because the appointment of the boards is made by the mayor, who's an elected official, and all the appointments should be approved by council. Did council approve all four of the board members of the sewer authority?
Except for the zoning board, all appointments are made by the mayor.
I know the appointments are made, but don't they come before council?
And the council only has consent. They serve at the pleasure of the mayor.
Yeah, but they have to, council has to approve them, right?
No, they do not.
They don't come before?
They do come before as for a review, but our approval is not necessary.
But you do have the right to deny it and say no.
We can vote no if we care to, yes.
Exactly. You could say no, but obviously.
But they serve at the pleasure of the mayor.
But obviously, we get very few no votes, because they all make it to the board, right?
Yeah, they serve at the pleasure of the mayor.
Yeah, they serve at the pleasure of the mayor, but if council votes them down, if you get 5-0 vote, no for them, they still placed on the board?
Yes.
And why do we have a city council there? You guys are doing nothing.
The city is an executive.
You have no authority.
The city is the executive form of government. The mayor is responsible for all decisions.
I know that. So why do we have a city council? Why are we paying you guys $12,500 a year? You have no power. You have no authority. You have no say-so. You invite people to come to the meetings, and they don't show up or they turn you down. So why, besides passing legislation, why do we even have a city council?
Anyone else?
Dave Dobson, resident. Taxes paid, fees paid. Not like the friends of certain public officials that got away for 15 years without a multiple landlord, without paying a dime of his trash fees. The North Scranton apartments came up, and I'd like to remind everybody that every apartment in that complex costed $414,000. And question yourself, how much would it cost in labor and materials to build a ranch-style house for $120,000 retail? Probably half that much. So, do the math. We could have seven or eight ranch-style houses in Scranton for what every apartment costs in North Scranton. Now, on the sewer, we did have a stormwater study. It was conducted years ago. It was conducted by the Lackawanna River Corridor Association and their associates. And they assumed that your humble home would cost you about two bucks a month. God only knows what it's going to cost in the future. Who knows? And I'm not religious, by the way, so we can skip him and leave him out of it. And hangover legislation was brought up tonight. You know, for years, for centuries, if you go back in the books, if I'm not mistaken, we have, we take our elderly into nursing homes and pay with Medicaid. Well, you better get down to the people's law school, because when they start withdrawing these institutions, then the courts are going to come in, and orphan court. And their laws are probably still on the books, and they could require you to take in a relative, irregardless of what kind of trouble they can cause trying to cook, suffer, burn down your house, because they have Alzheimer's or whatever. And you'll just have to take them in by court order. Now, let's get to what I'm really interested in tonight, and I'm furious on 7A. Pay as you throw. What do you do with people that throw and don't want to pay? They just come up and toss a television off onto your property. I see televisions all over right now, and they just come up and, when you're asleep or whatever, and throw trash or garbage or garbage bags. My Schumacher went out one day, and I think if I remember the story right, she put her one bag of garbage out and came back, and there were several bags sitting in front of her house. Who pays for that? Who pays for that? I'll tell you who pays for that. I took 21 bags of partially burnt and scorched cans and God only knows what, Pampers, you name it, and put it in my boss's dumpster at his permission. But, you know, who pays for that? And then, every Sunday night in this town, they used to sneak out, because they had an ordinance against burning, every Sunday night, when you're sitting there, it's a nice summer Sunday night, for a night on the porch, and sneaking out and burning trash. You come home and your porch is loaded up with trash. The police are at your house a week or two after you move in, and the neighbor upstairs has 51 bags of garbage that they didn't pay to throw. And they turn around and said, they actually lied to the mayor and the policeman that it was ours. And the policeman's standing there screaming at my wife. Well, you know, I have to bring her down here, I guess. She could tell you this story better. And she showed them the coupon book that we got as soon as we moved in. But, you know, it just gets, nobody's going to pay to throw. And it'll just be a minute, but I'm having a hard time voting for anybody anymore over all of the instances, from Amoroso to the cigarettes in the parks, you name it. Vote Dujia for dictator. Tyranny with equality for all.
Norma Jeffries. I'm not here about my list of street names and the signs, because they're still vacant, but I was approached by a news channel that showed up at my door. I don't know how they found my address, but I didn't think that was necessary. I refuse that, because I have confidence in you guys, that you're going to take care of it, that there is going to be money found. You don't have to be a great big thing on the TV and all, you know. I presented the list, and I'm having confidence that it will be done. What I'm here tonight for is, the first thing I want to say is to thank whoever takes care of the Lackawanna Parks, of McDade Park. I was up there this week. I've been there before on other occasions, but this time, it was my venue. And I made my reservation in January, so that I could have a particular pavilion. It was excellent. The weather even cooperated. It rained in the morning, and in the afternoon, the sun came out. The kids had a great time in the little play area up there. And I have to mention his name, Jerry, took care of us, because there was a little trash there when I first got there. And he cleaned it up and made everything really nice, the ladies' rooms and everything. It was a great day, and if anyone doesn't know how great that park is, it's a great The second thing, could I give you another list? And I don't know whose responsibility it is to spray for poison ivy, but there is a location, and you'll see the address on here, Stanley Place in North Scranton. And they have a terrible problem with poison ivy there. It's right in back of the Weston Park there. There's a little street that goes through there. They do cut it down, but as anyone knows with poison ivy, it comes back. I've had poison ivy. It's not fun. So, I need some help. Whose responsibility is it to spray? It needs to be sprayed, not cut down.
I received your message late this afternoon, and I knew you were going to be here tonight, so that's why I didn't call you back. But we can forward this to DPW. I believe that would be their responsibility. I'm not sure if there's a spray for something like this. I'd imagine that there is, but we'll definitely look into it and try to take care of it.
Yeah, because I know I've sprayed my property with it, and it works, but it's a bugger of a thing. And, you know, the kids are going to be out of school soon, and they're going to use that shortcut to go up there. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
And I wouldn't say one other thing. I have a little folder where I'm collecting things. I'm nice now. I'm collecting little articles that are appearing in the paper that are of interest to me. I'm not ready to discuss them now. One of my, uh, my career was data gathering, and that's what I'm doing now. And I'll be back, probably in the fall, with some of this stuff.
Marie Schumacher. First off, I intended tonight to wear a red nose in memory of Mr. McGough, who I think the very first time it arrived in the United, program arrived in the United States, I bought it. I did not go into the room where I left it and, but I was remembering him in thought anyway. And I, I just wanna say publicly, I don't know if Ron Elman and, and Andy Spraglia, uh, watched ECTV, but, uh, they are missed. I hope they come back soon. Uh, we need them, and we need other people as well. On Agenda Item 5H, that is the, putting the outdoor seating at 404 Washington Avenue. Uh, I don't know if you read the backup. The schematic was not there, but what I'm curious about, I believe they said they would still have a five-foot walkway after they put these tables. I find that hard to believe unless they're going to change the front of the building. And if they change the front of the building to accomplish that, do they have to go through the Historical and Architectural Review Board? Because that's gonna make a big change in that building if they have to take away part of that.
I doubt they're gonna take part of the building away, but I, I would imagine they definitely would have to go before the heart of this historic building downtown.
Yeah, but, uh, there's, as I say, they, they mentioned, the backup mentions a schematic that I think the zoning officer looked at, but it, but I didn't see one. So I would like to see that before you vote for it, 'cause I have a hard time believing they can, between the parking meters and the...
There's some pictures there, but they're not very good.
Oh, okay. Um, and then moving along, um, did anybody take the time, maybe you, Mr. Rogan, to find out what UNC is doing, renting the federally funded units to drug dealers and?
I do have that on my list, the follow-ups with UNC, but I haven't counted to that yet, but I do have that on my list.
I noticed another recipient from the, the former group at OECD, uh, is now being charged by the U.S. Labor Department for not even paying minimum wage. But they were, we were very generous with them also. So I think we need to be very wary if you're thinking about going ahead again with economic development loans, that you have to do some deeper thinking. Uh, and then, um, does anybody look at the backup before you come? Did you look, anybody look at, I believe, 3D? Which is the report of the last assessment, uh, Appeal Board meeting? Of that, you might notice thirteen of the properties, or forty-two percent of the properties that were being appealed that particular day, are from Scranton, which is not unusual. That's about the percentage we have of the, of, in the city. However, in total, the amount of the assessments of the Scranton properties were reduced twenty-six percent. Individually, the reductions ranged from zero, one of the thirteen, to fifty percent. Um, individually, individual percentages of reduction were zero, one, four-point-eight percent, one, five-point-two percent, one, eight-point-one, one, eighteen-point-one, one, uh, thirty-two-point-one, another property, twenty-two-point-eight, one, twenty-seven-point-six, one, thirty-three-point-three, reduction, two, uh, forty-two-point-nine percent, reduction, one, forty-seven-point-one percent, reduction, one, fifty-point-zero, reduction, one. That tells you a lot about how bad our properties are assessed in this city. And I see, I don't know, I saw something in the paper recently that German, whatever they are, borough township, was going to vote to send something. But I think it's time you guys consider doing something more than talking about the need for the reassessment and maybe act as a body to, uh, request that something be done overall because it's really bad out there. Next, the condemnation. We have rental registration done, and we were told that the condemnation legislation, everybody agrees it's, needs help, but where is it?
Well, we're gonna have another work session on that alone. So I think that's the plan right now, is to have a work session. We have several people we wanna invite, like the, uh, Ron Koljeski from the Tax Name Bureau. There's several attorneys in town, developers wanna be involved with that, so.
I, I, sorry, my name. Additionally, I met with, uh, Commissioner O'Malley and Ron Koljeski about, about four weeks ago, um, regarding how the city's condemnation policy affects the county tax sale. Um, so there's some, some issues there that we're gonna try to include in this proposal.
Well, I, I would hope you get that moving before your, you take off for your monthly of August. Are you still meeting in those small groups, by the way? You, you announced them two years ago, and then there was something, and then?
We did have some, but I, I, I think what we wanna do is, we talked about it, uh, bring it back to City Hall and City Council to have a lot for more participation. Uh, so we're gonna break, create the subject and have the meetings here.
And then, if I may indulge you in one, one more item, SAPA?
Yes.
Uh, what is happening with, with SAPA? Is that gonna be a general, uh?
Well.
A, a general across the board for SAPA redo of?
Yes. Well, we're gonna do our own individual, uh, zoning code, but it's gonna be part of the overall SAPA footprint. They're all gonna be working together.
With it, and when, what's the timeline for that?
September is the timeframe for, uh, getting, applying for the grant, and we expect that to start in the first quarter of 2018. We've already, I think you might have it, Bill, but we, we got a letter already that indicates what the, uh, uh, cost to us would be. I think it's gonna be nineteen thousand, I think, for us to do our-
Did you say nineteen thousand?
Nineteen, nineteen thousand.
That's all?
Yeah, well, it would've been almost fifty thousand if we weren't in the group.
Oh.
Yeah, because we're gonna get grant money from the county, grant money from the state, uh, because of our participation with SAPA. So it's, it's more than affordable.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-oh, sorry. No, sorry.
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Perry?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Wexler. I do have a, a couple of quick things to talk on tonight. Uh, since this was just brought up about the, uh, the variance on North Washington, about posh, I do have some, uh, some handwritten schematics in front of me. I do have, I, I have a very firm permit, uh, position on outside dining areas. Uh, you know, it, I'm, I'm all for them, but not to sacrifice any kind of safety. Our downtowns are busy enough. There's, there's parking. There's, uh, there's cars from, from curb to curb, whether they're parked or moving. And to not have adequate walking lanes, uh, is just, is just too much of a hazard. So I, I'm sure you saw this in the back page, but for everybody else, I don't know how visible it is. Uh, there's going to be two tops, uh, two-top dining tables set up that's going to hug the wall. There's also going to be a four-foot barrier, uh, barrier fence that's going to separate the walking traffic from the dining traffic. Now, with that being said, the question at hand was, is there enough room for people to walk on that sidewalk safely without somebody, you know, having to veer off onto the street? Uh, this says there's seven feet from curb to the, from the separation wall. Now, whether that's true or not, I don't know. I'm taking this off of this value. So, you know, I have no problem, uh, accepting the reading of this, uh, tonight, but, you know, there will be, I will find out, uh, a firm answer if I have to walk the tape measure myself, uh, to make sure, uh, it's allowed. Because there are a couple dining, uh, outside dining, uh, legislations on the docket tonight. And while it gives businesses in the city, you know, the upper hand and, and levels the playing field and some for the almighty dollar that's out there, uh, we can't do it at, at anybody's safety. Uh, so, you know, that's something I'm going to be looking at this week, is just to make sure that we do have adequate walk space there. Uh, because that does seem awful tight, and it's, they are marking it as seven feet, which it's tough to tell from a hand drawing, which, you know, is obviously not to scale. And, uh, uh, Ms. Schumacher, staying with you, you had the question about, uh, the possibility of the six police officers in retirement, and if they accept it. I, I do have some information, uh, thanks to, uh, Chief Graziano and Mrs. Reed. They did a lot of legwork for me, so I wanna say thank you, uh, for all that. Uh, so we do have some information. Uh, I have the, the MOU, uh, in front of me, uh, and the Resolution 118, uh, that was adopted January 29th of 2015. Since that resolution has been adopted, there has been a total of four work-related disability pensions given and two non-work-related disabilities pension. Uh, in 2017, there has been zero. Now, since that time, there's only has been one, uh, years-of-service pension, uh, given out since that, uh, January 29th, 2015. And those, the, the, these numbers are according to the minutes from the police pensions and commission board meetings. Uh, so when we sent this off, uh, we got a response from Chief Graziano. And his response says that, uh, based on the question that I, that I gave him, the police department does not have an early retirement incentive in their contract. Uh, there is a sliding scale bonus in the contract if an officer retires in the first six months following the retirement anniversary date. Uh, however, the officer still needs to reach full retirement eligibility to qualify. Officers must have twenty-five years of service and a minimum of fifty-five years old to obtain a regular pension. And, uh, you know, so we did pull that, that MMO, and, you know, the verbiage gets, it gets kinda deep, but, you know, we do have it here, and I'll just kinda highlight what it says in, in, uh, in Section 5 of, of servants and document. Uh, Section A, within a hundred and twenty days of ratification of currently eligible or within a hundred and twenty days of retirement eligibility, uh, it's ten thousand dol-, or, yes, ten thousand dollars, decimal point is off here. Uh, B, within a hundred and fifty days, it's seven thousand five hundred. And C, a hundred and eighty days, they stay on, it's five thousand. And, uh, so there is a sliding scale, uh, but as far as, uh, incentive to retire, uh, early, there, there is none of that in, in the, uh, in the, in the current contract. Uh, I know Mr. Evans is gonna bring up graffiti subject, uh, coming up soon, sooner than later, and I just wanna go on record right now. Uh, you know, if there's one thing that will bring a community down, is, is, uh, once, once graffiti goes up and it's left up, it's a sign that the neighborhood and the citizens have given up. And once people realize that, that's, it doesn't get any better from there. Uh, while some people might see a, a tag mark on a stop sign or a mailbox and just kinda walk by it, uh, that's definitely not the society, community that I wanna live in. And, uh, you know, I'll be there in full force, you, Mr. Evans, and, uh, but, you know, I'll definitely be the point man in my neck of the woods in my couple-block radius, 'cause, uh, it's going to take a community to fix a, a community problem. It's not going to be done by two or three people. It's going to take, uh, people from all parts of the neighborhoods to, uh, to stay on top of it. We have to send out a clear and concise message that this is not gonna be tolerated. As fast as it goes up, it needs to come down. That was always my philosophy on graffiti, whether it was, uh, i- in my home, around my house, or, or in my businesses that I work at. It's just, there's no place for it. Uh, 7A, is Mr. Dobson still here? We're, you know, we're gonna butt heads on, on 7A. Uh, you know, we're going to have that study done, and we, we want to know, you know, the pay-as-you-throw, uh, concept. It, it needs to be explored fully because what we have right now does not work. The three hundred dollars flat does not work. It's just, there's no equality in it. And, uh, I, I just, I hope never to have to vote on a three hundred dollar, uh, garbage fee flat across the board again because it just does not make any sense, uh, for the amount of, for the, for the demographics that we have in this city, to have just one tier of refuge, uh, removal fee, it just, it, it, we can do a lot better than that. And we owe, we owe the citizens a lot better than that. And this is step one of, of seeing what is out there, what can we offer. Uh, I was always in favor of a high-bred system where there's a, a lower yearly fee plus a, a bag, a per-bag fee, where, uh, it, it's a lot more manageable. It encompasses everything. If you're, if you're a one-bag person, a week or two-bag, it's going to be a heck of a lot easier on you. Uh, with that being said, you know, I, I, I desperately wanna see this study done and get on with this, what I call archaic way of, of, uh, collecting garbage and refuge fees. Uh, Mrs. Reed, uh, I haven't heard back from Director Hinton on 11/20 Columbia. Uh, last week, I made a request, uh, to his department if the owners of the condemned property have been attempted to have been contacted. Uh, just to kinda, uh, reiterate from last week, I know the neighbors in that area, they have some issues. Uh, they were able to get, uh, someone on scene to cut the, the long grass, but there's still an animal issue with getting into the house, and it's, it's just not very well boarded up. And as we know, condemned houses in our neighborhood, just, they're not, they're not desirable, to say the least. And, uh, you know, there's only so much we can do to a condemned house because we don't actually own it. We, we, you know, we can't really do much to it, but we do owe it to the citizens and this, as a city, to do our due diligence and try to track the owners down to get them to do whatever they have to do to at least secure the property. If they don't want anything to do with it, and they wanna just let it go, whether it's the tax sale, SARA sale, whatever, but, you know, they still, they're still on the hook for it, and they still should maintain it as, at least safe as possible. And I'm not talking, you know, it, we're just talking about putting a couple of boards up. So at least if we can get back to the citizens in that area that we have, the city has made their due diligence to contact the owners, that would be, uh, that'd be great. And I'm gonna end this, uh, with, uh, with last night at the Scranton Sewer Authority meeting. Uh, I don't, I'm kinda, I was perplexed, as most people were. This was, as I thought, their chance to bring almost certain closure to what has been, you know, a, an auspicious part of our city for the last months. Uh, I was really, really hoping, and I thought they would agree with Dunmore Council, Scranton Council, the citizens of both Dunmore and Scranton, to get an independent audit in there and end this once and for all. Uh, Mayor Cartwright went on record this week as saying everything was above board. Why won't the Scranton Sewer Authority just do an audit and let's end this? Uh, I know they voted for, against the motion to get an independent auditor in there, and the reason was, well, they're going to get an audit done anyway based on their, their annual review. Well, what's not going to fly with the citizens or with this board is that audit is going to be done by someone they pay to do the audit, and that is not a third party. That is not an independent person. That is some, that is a hired, really, it's employed that you hired to do work for you. And, you know, unfortunately, the, it just doesn't, the citizens in this board will see right through it. It's not good enough for our standards. We've been, we've been brought along on this issue way too long. Between redacted issues and, or, sorry, redacted records, uh, right-to-know, uh, right-to-know ans-, or, uh, questions and, and papers just not being answered by, by the newspaper, there's too much out there left, not answered. So I'm gonna make a plea to them once again, to, if you want this end over with, 'cause I'm, if you think the spotlight has been turned off after last night's meeting, the spotlight just got brighter and hotter. And they have all the power in the world to end this, and that is just to get an independent auditor in there and end it once and for all. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Rogan?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Perry mentioned almost everything I planned on mentioning tonight, so I'm gonna request next week that we switch seats. But on the SSA, I, I agree wholeheartedly. I was very disappointed that the Sewer Authority Board did not agree, um, with the unanimous decisions of Scranton Council and Dunmore Council to have the Sewer Authority deal audited by, uh, by the Auditor General. It makes sense. It's an independent person, and the taxpayers deserve to know what happened with every dime in the transaction. Um, I did hear coming in that there's a schedule of having a town hall meeting and that unredacted documents are going to be released, which I think is some good news. But I do hope that the Sewer Authority Board will reconsider their decision and allow for that, for that audit to be completed and released to the public, um, so everyone can know exactly where everything stands. Um, regarding the graffiti, um, I agree as well with everything that was mentioned, and I'm a big believer in the broken windows theory, which Rudy Giuliani used in New York City to revive, uh, revive New York City. And when you have graffiti and broken windows and all these problems in neighborhoods, it attracts a criminal element. And when you have well-maintained properties and, you know, everything looks nice, it attracts homeowners and people who wanna live in a nice neighborhood. So it's very important to keep, uh, keep our neighborhoods looking good, and the ones that aren't, to get them, to get them back on track. Um, very pleased to hear, uh, what Councilman Wexler mentioned at the, at the top of the meeting about the electronics recycling. One of the biggest problems in our neighborhoods- One of the biggest problems in our neighborhoods is that people aren't able to get rid of old TVs, computers, and particularly the old heavy console TVs, because the recycling center charges a per-pound fee to get rid of them. So I would urge everyone to take advantage of this opportunity to get rid of these items free of charge, because the DPW legally cannot take them. So because of, because of the rules at the dump, this is your opportunity to get rid of those items, so please take advantage of it. I know I am going to, and I know in my neighborhood, there are some TVs that have been out on the curb for quite some time, so that's something we're definitely looking forward, and I want to thank the county commissioners for, for getting that together for us. And finally, on the rental registration, bids were opened for a rental registration database. Now, I wish that this had been done prior to a number of rental registration bills being sent out erroneously, but there were two bidders. I did get a chance to review those bids earlier today. The one firm is an out-of-town firm that currently handles foreclosure registration for the city, and the other firm is a local firm, which had a very good proposal as well. Now, there is a, from glancing at it, seems there is a big difference in the price between the two firms, but I'm hopeful that this will help get the rental registration program on track and really have those letters targeted to people who own rental investment properties, not being sent to people with single-family homes, not being sent to people who have a double that live in one side and rent the other. Really, we, to get it to the targeted rental properties, particularly the ones that are owned by out-of-town landlords. So that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan. Mr. Evans?
Thank you. As a reminder, on graffiti, a work session will be held in City Hall on June 5th at 4:30. Numerous stakeholders have been invited that we feel will be helpful in trying to arrest this issue. I'd like to thank Councilman Perry as well as Councilman Rogan. I think all of us up here may talk about this. I think there's a real passion on City Council to get this thing eradicated and taken care of, so I'm looking forward to coming up with a multi-prong approach to solve the graffiti problem once and for all, or at least get control of it. There were two recent votes by elected officials and appointed officials that I would like to discuss tonight. First is the recent vote by the German Borough Council to adopt a resolution to call on the Lackawanna County Commissioners to conduct a countywide reassessment. I would like to personally thank the German Council for joining Scranton City Council in recognizing the need for reassessment. Only a countywide reassessment will create a true tax equality, as well as foster economic development. I would also urge every borough, township, city, and school district to let your voices be heard. Join Scranton City Council and German Borough Council, and let the two county commissioners who oppose the reassessment know loud and clear, no more excuses, no more waiting, it's time to do what is one of the fundamental responsibilities of county government. The second vote took place last night in the Governor's Room at City Hall, right behind where we're meeting tonight. Myself, Councilman Wexler, Councilman Rogan, or Councilman Gahn attended. After the three-to-one vote not to request the Auditor General come into audit the transaction, quite frankly, I was shocked. I generally feel that when given the opportunity, good people will usually do the right thing. And I'm not suggesting the SSA Board members aren't good people, but by every criteria I can think of, this was a wrong decision. The SSA Board had an opportunity to allow for a qualified, independent voice to be heard. They had an opportunity to prove beyond a shadow of a doubt, as the mayor stated, that everything is above board, and allow us to finally move beyond the lack of transparency and the lack of forthcoming information. This City Council, as well as Dunmore City Council, voted unanimously for the Auditor General to review this transaction and all of its components. The appointed SSA Board rejected the wishes of the elected officials, as well as the wishes of the majority of taxpayers, ratepayers, and citizens from Dunmore and Scranton. So now those board members that voted no, as well as the mayor of Scranton, who also did not feel the audit was necessary, own this decision and all of its consequences. Scranton City Council should continue and will continue to press for answers, and we will continue to do everything in our power to get those answers. Yes, the SSA Board voted no, but none of us should take that no for an answer. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Gahn?
Yes, thank you. Yesterday's decision by the Scranton Sewer Authority Board to deny the request for the Auditor General of the State of Pennsylvania to perform a full review, an independent audit of the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority to Pennsylvania American Water, was a blatant slap in the face to every single ratepayer, every single taxpayer in Scranton and in Dunmore. The meeting and the decision to close the door on the Auditor General was a shocking display of ignorance and a complete dereliction of duty on the part of the members of the Scranton Sewer Authority Board. Keep in mind that there were two legislative bodies, this City Council, Dunmore City Council, and Dunmore Mayor-elect Tim Burke, who requested that they invite the Auditor General in. Mr. Parker, Mr. Whalen, and Mr. Boccardio, or Bocadori, are supposed to be independent and represent the interests of the ratepayers and no one else. Their lack of regard for transparency and utter disdain for openness, which was evident in their denial of inviting the Auditor General in, leaves no doubt in my mind that they do not have the best interests of the ratepayers and taxpayers of Scranton and Dunmore in mind. Mr. Parker, who is the chairman of the Sewer Authority Board, said yesterday that there is no need for the Auditor General to come in, because the Scranton Sewer Authority is hiring their own independent auditor. That statement in and of itself is laughable at best. How can it truly be independent when the board members have the final say on who comes in and audits? Mr. Parker also said that he does not agree with waiving all attorney-client privilege to release completely unredacted documents. He didn't want to give up that right. Well, here's a newsflash for Mr. Parker and the rest of the board. The client here is the ratepayers. The client here is the taxpayers of Scranton and Dunmore. We have a right to see those invoices, we have a right to see what 50 attorneys did in relation to this transaction, we have a right to see what someone did for $200,000, $800 an hour, over $100,000 in a month in some instances. And I'd still like someone to explain to me how attorney-client privilege fits in here and how you can redact almost all of these documents and use that as an excuse. And I asked Executive Director Shrive and never received a response. It's time to stop hiding behind attorney-client privilege. Also, it's my belief that Mr. Parker should have strongly considered recusing himself last night from both of those votes because of his personal and professional relationship with Abrahamsen, Conneboy, and Abrahamsen, of which he used to be an associate attorney, and who was a law firm involved and a part of this transaction. Mr. Parker is supposed to protect the ratepayers, not the law firms. So based on the statements and actions yesterday of Mr. Parker, Mr. Whalen, and Mr. Bocadori, I would ask for their immediate resignation from the Board of the Scranton Sewer Authority. It is crystal clear that they do not have the best interests of the ratepayers in mind, and their continued service on the Board can only be a detriment to openness and transparency, and I would hope that my colleagues would join me in calling for their immediate resignation. Absent from yesterday's meeting was Mayor Courtright, which at this point should not be a surprise to anyone who has been following local government for the past three and a half years. Now, apparently, we learned in the caucus that the mayor had a press conference earlier today. I don't know the exact details of it, but from what I understand, they are now going to release the legal invoices, and they are going, or the mayor is going to have a town hall meeting. Too little, too late. Where was Mayor Courtright for the last six months, when this council has been asking these questions and we were stonewalled? So now, all of the sudden, after the board members of the Scranton Sewer Authority vote against inviting the Auditor General in, now all of the sudden, they want to have a town hall meeting? Now, all of the sudden, they're going to release all of these documents? Well, I'm sorry, it's a little suspicious to me. What's really surprising about Mayor Courtright were his comments in the newspaper. When asked if he thought an audit of the transaction should occur, he said, and I quote, "If they think there's a need, I certainly can't stop them. Everything was done above board, nothing underhand it was done." And his comments beg the question, how does the mayor know if everything was done above board and nothing underhand it was done? If that is the case, as he suggests, then why not invite the Auditor General in? It will not cost the city a dime, and the Auditor General, Mr. De Pasquale, has said he would have no problem performing the audit. If everything was done above board, as the mayor asserts, why has the Sewer Authority Board fought me tooth and nail over the last six months when I've requested document after document and asked questions? On the city's website, under the Office of Mayor, it says, "Mayor Courtright's pledge is to be transparent, fiscally responsible, honest, and to represent the city of Scranton with integrity that is beyond reproach. I would respectfully request that that statement be taken down immediately." The mayor has broken his pledge to be transparent, along with the board members of the Scranton Sewer Authority. At this point, if the mayor of our city and his appointees to the Scranton Sewer Authority Board want to slam the door on the Auditor General, then I am officially asking our solicitor, Mr. Menora, to review and examine what kind of jurisdiction the Attorney General of the State of Pennsylvania would have, and what kind of purview he would have over coming in and taking a look at and examining the transaction of the Scranton Sewer Authority and Pennsylvania American Water. It's my belief that the Attorney General does have jurisdiction under Chapter 56 of Municipal Authorities Title 53, subsection 5612, where he has, it gives him the right to examine the transaction accounts and all records of municipal authorities. So I expect that Attorney Menora will look into this and will have an answer by next Thursday. Ladies and gentlemen, from what I've seen over the last six months, where there is smoke, there is usually fire, and there is a whole lot of smoke surrounding this deal. People still want answers? If Mayor Courtright wants to have a town hall meeting, that's great. But where was he for the last six months? If they want to release the records, why did the Sewer Authority Board, in one of the most bizarre meetings I've ever seen in my entire life, vote against releasing all the documents? Vote against allowing the Auditor General to come in? It begs the question, what is really going on here? I don't think anybody knows. So again, I think that people need to continue to demand answers with this transaction, and I know myself, I will continue to ask these questions, and I will continue to demand transparency, accountability, and integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahn. I did attend the meeting yesterday, and I also was quite surprised that the vote was not taken to ask the Attorney General, the Auditor General, to come in. The fact that Scranton City Council and Dunmore Council had both asked for this and requested it, I believe it gave the Sewer Authority Board the proper, I don't want to use the right term, cover, but the right encouragement to take this vote and to put this matter to rest. I did speak to Mayor Courtright earlier this evening, and he informed me that they are planning to release the unredacted documents, give them to the public time to review them, and then have a town hall meeting sometime a few weeks after those records are released. From talking to the mayor this evening, the questions, there will be an open forum for the public to ask questions. I haven't heard of any restrictions on the questions. I haven't heard any restrictions on the amount of time that the town hall will take. He has provided, speaking to him, he has provided me with the list of people that he is going to ask to attend, and I do believe that this would be an opportunity to get these questions answered that this council's been asking since January. Unfortunately, the focus has been on council to get these answers. Recently, this evening, a Times reporter asked us for council to request the Auditor General to come in. Well, we've already done that. I reached out to Dunmore Council to get them to ask the auditor to come in. Council has been trying to do this all along. I wish that this town hall meeting had been held sooner. I think we've, we've kind of spun our wheels on a deal that had to happen. If the Scranton Sewer Authority was not sold, there is a strong possibility that Scranton could be facing receivership as we move into 2018. Along with receivership would be tax increases, reductions in services. I stand by my vote to sell the Scranton Sewer Authority. We had to do it, we needed the money. Do I wish there was more transparency in the deal? Obviously, because we're still talking about it, and it's five months later. In order to get the true benefit of this sale, this matter has to be put behind us. I still think that the Auditor General coming in even after the town hall meeting, I think, still is the best way to go. I think we'd still need that independent third party to go through this and make sure that everything was done properly. In regards to the electronic recycling, this is something that is, that we're going to have to come, come together in a city, as a city. I think every, every home in Scranton has some type of electronics that has to be removed. I believe in our city right now, there's a lot of people that are going to need assistance in getting those TVs and monitors to the curb. So I'm going to reach out to the neighborhood associations to see if they can help this out. I know I have a big TV that 10 years ago, I could move by myself, and right now, I can't move it by myself anymore. So I'm looking for assistance as well to help me move my TV. But it is something that the, the people in the city are going to have to come together, and as Mr. Rogan said, it's very expensive. If you miss this opportunity to recycle your electronics, I think they're charging almost $2 a pound. So if you take one of those huge televisions to a recycling center, it's going to cost you several hundred dollars to recycle it, and that's why they're out in the street. So as a community, I do thank the county commissioners for putting this together, working through the state, and I also thank the input that's been given by our director of Public Works to come up with a plan to make best use of this, of this program. Also this evening, I'd received a call from Mr. Peter Cameron from the Scranton Times, informing, informing us that some census data was released today, where Scranton is one of the fastest-growing cities still in the area. While other communities are having a reduction in population growth, Scranton is having an increase, and I think that's a testament to the development that's happened in our downtown in terms of residential, additional residential apartments, and I also think it's part of the good housing stock that we have in our city for renters, and I do appreciate that news this evening. That's it.
5B for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement by and between the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority and the city of Scranton pertaining to the maintenance of the two-stamped bituminous asphalt crossings at the intersection of Olive Street Crossings and the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion, item 5B, reintroduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question, all is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5C for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement by and between the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority and the city of Scranton pertaining to the maintenance of the stamped bituminous asphalt crossing at the intersection of Naug Avenue Crossing and the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion, item 5C, reintroduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question, all is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5D for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement by and between the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority and the city of Scranton pertaining to the maintenance of the stamped bituminous asphalt crossing at the intersection of Albright Avenue Crossing and the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion, item 5D, reintroduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question, all is in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? The ayes have it, so moved.
5E for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement by and between the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority and the city of Scranton pertaining to the maintenance of the stamped bituminous asphalt crossing at the intersection of Poplar Street Crossing and the Lackawanna River Heritage and the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
5F for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement by and between the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority and the city of Scranton pertaining to the maintenance of the stamped bituminous asphalt crossing at the intersection of East Market Street Crossing and the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
5G for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement by and between the Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority and the city of Scranton pertaining to the maintenance of the two rectangular, rapid-flashing beacons stamped bituminous asphalt crossings at the intersection of Broadway Street and the Lackawanna River Heritage Trail.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
5H for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to grant a special encroachment permit to Posh at the Scranton Club to operate outdoor seating at 404 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yeah, on the question, this is the property that was brought up earlier today. So again, I'll get clarification on this, and if I have to walk it off myself with a tape measure, I will, but there, right now, in the legislation they have, they allowed for a seven-foot easement for a walkway.
Yeah, on the question, I also believe that since there'll be other requirements of this, if it's going to be alcohol-related, there'll be PLCB requirements for that area, so their dimensions are really going to have to be accurate, I know, for those type of permits.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
5I for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to grant a special encroachment permit to Da Vinci's Pizza to operate an outdoor restaurant at 505 Linden Streets, Granton, Pennsylvania.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
5J for introduction of resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to grant a special encroachment permit to Kappa in care of the Ritz Building to operate an outdoor restaurant at 222 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title filed with Council Number 100, 2017, An Ordnance Authorizing the Secretary of Transportation to acquire right-of-way necessary for the West Lackawanna Avenue Bridge. Document number is noted as part of the city of Scranton-owned bridge project.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I moved that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
6B, reading by title filed with Council Number 101, 2017, An Ordnance Authorizing the Secretary of Transportation to acquire right-of-way necessary for the Elm Street Bridge. Document number is noted as part of the city of Scranton-owned bridge project.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
I moved that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
6C, reading by title filed with Council Number 102, 2017, An Ordnance Authorizing the Secretary of Transportation to acquire right-of-way necessary for the North Main Avenue Bridge. Document number is noted as part of the city of Scranton-owned bridge project.
You've heard reading by title of item 6C. What is your pleasure?
I moved that item 6C pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, Resolution Number 151, 2017, ratifying and approving the submission of a Pennsylvania recycling technical assistance application submitted by the Department of Business Administration to the Department of Environmental Protection for a technical assistance grant to conduct a recycling refuse program evaluation and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant funds in the amount of $7,500 for the environmental consulting company, SCS Engineers, selected by DEP to provide technical assistance to municipalities for the Pay-as-you-throw collection program.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 152, 2017, accepting a donation of $3,799 from Amos Towers Management Enterprises Incorporated, presented to the city of Scranton Fire Department for the purchase of much-needed equipment for the fire department.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.